Good evening, I'd like to call the August 8th Village of Vicksburg Planning Commission and DDA meeting to order. I think our first order of business is swearing in our new member Zach Bishop, is that correct Mr. Mallory?
It is. And I will ask Mr. Bishop to stand, Mr. Lee, are you good if Mr. Bishop stands right there? If you can raise your hand and repeat after me, I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The ordinances of this village.
The ordinances of this village.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Planning Commission and Downtown Development Association member.
The duty of Planning Commission and Downtown Development Association member.
In and for the Village of Vicksburg.
In and for the Village of Vicksburg.
County of Kalamazoo.
County of Kalamazoo.
And State of Michigan.
And State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome Zach, now the heavy lifting starts. Um, Mr. Mallory, do we have any guests or public officials in attendance tonight?
No, sir.
Mr. DeBolt, would you please take roll call tonight?
Schenkel, Newman.
Present.
Manchester.
Present.
Holmes.
Present.
Wartella.
Present.
DeLong.
Present.
Cox, DeBolt, and Mr. Bishop.
Present.
Excellent, thanks. Uh, we've all received copies of tonight's agenda, are there any additions or corrections that anybody would like to make? In hearing none, I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like to see if there's a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
I will support. Motion made by Ms. DeLong and supported by Mr. Newman.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I promise I'll get better at this. Next item on the agenda, citizen comments, Mr. Lee, or anybody present, any comments from anybody?
There's none currently on Zoom, I didn't know if those in attendance wanted to speak. Okay.
Looking at the, uh, the regular meeting, the approval of, I'm sorry, I think we're at village manager report time, aren't we?
Uh, no, we're at the, you were correct.
Oh, okay.
The approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on July 11th, 2022.
Thank you, I can't read my own writing. Uh, we've all had a chance to take a look at it, again, any, uh, any addition or changes to them? Is there a motion to approve?
Just one second, my name is T.A.M.Y.A. T.O.M.Y.A. is what's on here, I don't know whether that makes a difference or not.
It certainly does, um, and we'll, uh, make a note of that, and it will be corrected.
Thank you, Tanya. With that change, is there a motion to approve?
This is Wartella, I would move to approve the regular July 11th through 22th, um, meeting minutes as revised.
This is Manchester, and I support that.
Motion by Wartella and seconded by Manchester, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now it's a village manager's report.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Holmes, uh, update on the, the current projects, uh, the DPW building is in the last phase, waiting on mechanical, that hopefully, uh, is completed yet this week and certainly, um, not longer than the end of next week. And, uh, that project will be complete, and then you'll see fence go up on the north, uh, by the end of September, the yard completely gone through and cleaned up, and, and the property, uh, really starting to take shape, so, moving forward there. I will add, um, because I confirmed today that tomorrow, uh, if you remember, part of the downtown project had multiple location of black decorative fencing, putting into the sidewalk, uh, one of the key areas are those four sections on Main Street, north and south of Liberty Lane. That work will start tomorrow, and hopefully is a one or two day, uh, project, um, there's additional fencing down on Prairie Street on the south side, west of Kalamazoo, uh, but we did confirm that, that subcontractor will be in tomorrow to complete that as part of the streetscape project. And then, uh, three items that, uh, received council approval, and we're glad, uh, because of the impact on people utilizing the parks, uh, the observation deck at Clark Park had shifted a couple rainstorms ago, maybe six, seven weeks ago, and really looked at, um, uh, short-term investment that we could make to, uh, um, so we entered into a working agreement, uh, Frederick's Construction and Mike Frederick's crew oversaw those projects. That one, I would say, is eighty-plus percent complete, underneath the decking is, um, um, some, uh, stone that will help, uh, with any type of erosion in the water, uh, but as well as the staining of the decks have to, have to still go on. As well as the small octagon pavilion, call it, uh, across the street, right there at the pond between Vickers and, um, Appleknackers, uh, a couple of the railings there were completely replaced, uh, again, power washed and will be stained. Uh, Fish and Pier is open and, and, uh, considerable work done at the Fish and Pier and Boardwalk of Sunset Lake Park, um, again, uh, what's left down there is, uh, staining as well as, there'll be a couple sections that, um, will make it easier for people who might be confined to a wheelchair to, if they were to go along the boardwalk where, where, where a section of it rises up, so we're looking at that, Mike and I are meeting down there tomorrow, so. It's nice to have all of those back open to the public and, uh, have received, uh, positive input from citizens who've, who've noticed it, I'll pause there for any, any questions on anything I've mentioned, or any other questions, reference, village news, or...
Jim, on the DPW building, are they going to be storing any type of, uh, salt or salt and sand mixture in there?
Yeah, part of the, um, construction was on the west side of that building, uh, I'll describe it as an overhang, it's a pretty deluxe overhang, but it was designed for, uh, it has a different, um, makeup of the cement underneath, knowing that it was going to store the salt, as well as, uh, the big huge cinder blocks guarding the walls and that for when the front end loader, uh, scoops out the salt, so, yes, but it's, it's in what would be considered an open overhang.
Yes, it's a good-looking building, thank you very much.
Yeah, so, hopefully we move on in the next fiscal year, looking at being able to, um, reskin or paint the other two buildings the same color, so they all match, so, so that's the ultimate five-year plan, is all of those buildings will match the same color.
Jim, I would just like to see how surprised I am to see how quickly those repairs were made, I think the council only approved those three weeks ago.
Yeah.
And it's, and, I mean, it's, it's lightning speed.
Yeah, and, uh, and, um, individuals might remember probably twelve, eighteen months ago, trying to, we couldn't even get a contractor to come quote, uh, uh, price out on some of these smaller projects, so yeah, a big shout out to Frederick's Construction and, and their crew for, for being on top of it.
Uh, any other questions, or, Mr. Mallory, is there any other updates for us?
No, no other updates unless anyone has any questions.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, action items for the commission, and it appears there is none this week, but there is a, a letter from the attorney, or from the village attorney you'd like to read to us?
Yeah, I just, uh, gave you a copy, so you're aware of communication, uh, at the last planning commission meeting, we had, had news of a potential exciting project at Boulevard and Prairie Street area, and, uh, we met as an internal team, and, and, uh, I would like to thank, uh, uh, Mr. Newman, uh, took time out of his personal schedule to, to come meet with us, as well as, uh, Mr. Cox from the Planning Commission, and, um, we want to aid this developer in the right direction, so, um, we invested in our attorney to kind of spell out that process, uh, that would best suit this project to ensure that, that that gets done, and I believe the developer is, is following that, um, as we speak, so I don't have a timeline when that could potentially come back to the Planning Commission, uh, we certainly hope it does, but we hope it, you know, that this guidance will, will aid in that process.
Any questions from the commission? I, I believe the developer was looking at a tenant sometime in the fall, and so, I'm not sure if that will change or not, but it...
Yeah, the big things are, are the architectural or engineering plans to, to be done, and she's making those contacts, and I don't, I haven't spoke, uh, I was out of town last week, so, um, uh, hopefully by September, we'll certainly be able to provide an update.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on, um, the Downtown Development Authority, it appears we have a couple items.
Yeah, the, we haven't expended any, any funds, as, as we started here, there, uh, the, the fence section of downtown, um, is, is covered by DDA funds, we are looking at, um, putting a type of matching fence that's portable, um, but meets the Liquor Control Commission's guidelines on In Front of the Distant Whistle, to have, uh, so gathering quotes on that, and, um, probably going to present utilizing downtown development dollars for, for that, to have a consistent look, um, and as, as we, uh, move forward, um, looking at different options of, uh, a set of bag games in the, um, Oswalt Park, uh, what could be best situated for their, um, potential expenditure of funds, um, but we haven't made a internal decision on which way we're going with that, but, um, uh, you know, so, DDA finances are rock solid.
And this is member DeBolt, um, you mentioned something about the fencing downtown, he's being paid for the, from the DDA, is that the new fencing that's going up on?
Yeah.
Main and, on Main Street, the, the four sections going in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Mallory? Jim, I just have one, and that is, um, as it relates to the fencing, I'm trying to remember, I could have sworn a year or two ago that there was some discussion about looking at a uniform look, or, or working within the DDA for something like that, and I was just curious if you can give me any background if, if that is in fact true.
That is correct, um, it's something that has, has fallen off coming back in front of the council, we initially started looking, um, due to the social district being down there, the investment downtown, different request on, um, potential for furniture to be on the sidewalk, um, we have scheduled meetings with the village attorney, uh, because bef, we made a decision before we complete that loop, we really have to get liability waivers signed if we're going to allow, which we want to, so I don't want to, and, um, but utilizing these public places to, to have, um, additional seating for, for the establishments, so that's, we're waiting for that to be complete, to then look at, um, I was asked by the different establishments that put out, uh, seats and tables, both of them asked me beforehand, and I said, yes, there's a significant concern, you know, after the fact, we'll get to it, but we kind of want to get a, these are my words without meeting with the attorney yet, but a waiver, just, just an agreement, so everyone's on the same page of utilizing that public space.
Yeah, the issue of identification is never fun, uh, you need to find a common way to work together, and I think it's great that it's been identified, and we're working with the village attorney on it.
Yeah, we definitely, and we by no means want to give any indication, we don't want this to be successful, we think it can be and will be, we just want to make sure that, uh, similar to what we have with the distant whistle, when we went through that LLC process, uh, we're, we're on the right foot.
Um, if there's no other questions, uh, we're at member comments, and... Thank you, Mr. DeBolt, uh, I jumped ahead there, Mr. Mallory, I think...
Yeah, our original plan was, was to present, uh, with the, the boundaries of, of the grant program that was approved within the budget on very high level, um, it, it, and had a little bit additional dollars, and, um, had a, um, one fifteen thousand dollar grant opportunity, two seventy-five hundred dollar grant opportunities, and a, a couple three thousand dollar grant opportunities, and expanded beyond what has historically been titled the facade grant program, and it will be based on, on, um, a public benefit, which could open up and expand where our downtown businesses invest their dollars and have support from the DDA. Andrew Horn and I's schedule, um, in July, and I bear as much responsibility of this, uh, has not been able to coordinate, um, due to my time off and family events and his, um, so we, he's off this week, I was off last week, including, I was off about ten days in July as well, so, um, we're looking at the last week of August, and it's on our timeline to be in a position to present that framework to this group, and ultimately, the week after, to the council, so, that can be finalized, and then, we will immediately get it out to the member DDA businesses to, um, you know, and part of the feedback and discussion even tonight will be, once we get this program rolled out, what is the appropriate timetable to provide someone to put in for a grant, this is the one year that we allowed a look back, going back to, uh, June, it, it's a 2021 date, I think it's June 1st, so if, uh, one of the businesses invested, and has already made that investment, they can still submit for this grant because we, uh, due to the fire suppression grant, we didn't allow for opportunities, so that's, was approved in the budget process for what we described as a look back, but we'll, uh, look for advice or input, um, from the Planning Commission on, you know, as forty-five days, if, if we get this rolled out on the start of week three of September, um, we like three weeks to evaluate, so, you know, what, we were looking at thirty days to submit the grant to the businesses, which gives us about eighteen days internally, um, it's the chairperson of the Planning Commission, village president, myself, the village attorney, I think one additional member from the Planning Commission, but there's five people that would review the grants and then present their recommendations, uh, to the Planning Commission first, and then ultimately the council for approval of expenditures of that grant money, so, so that's where we're at with it, but, you know, start there, does, is anyone think thirty days is not enough time for, of... So time-wise, if that was, um, it would be, you know, September fifteenth, that it would basically go to approval, uh, to the Planning Commission at their November meeting, and, as well as the council, so...
This is member Newman, my, uh, question with that is, uh, with the approval coming in November, uh, what is the timeframe for the, uh, project, the granted project to be complete, is it a year from approval, is it a fiscal year?
No, it'd be the fiscal year, we'd need it off the, off the books.
Okay.
And hopefully, hopefully, it's a successful program that becomes annual to some level, so...
So with this being the preliminary one, uh, is why, and, and still drafting the, the guidelines, uh, and application process, uh, for the new grant, um, is this something that, once that is done, and this is approved in, uh, November of this year, that would be looking to take grant submissions and have approval starting, uh, in the next fiscal year, so starting in July next year, would the grants be approved?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because then we could have the grant applications to businesses in May or June, you know, we could, we could have them out May 1st, have them be submitted by June 30th, based on an approval from, from the entity, the governmental entities, that we'd be able to expend money that way, ha, and then ha, have, in that timeline, we're talking, Mr. Newman, you'd have the approvals done in August, so...
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, Jim, I wondered, um, going into this last year, this last year, if, if businesses have done projects within this last year, not just 2021, but this last year, would they be eligible to?
Yes.
Submit those?
Yeah, and basically any project that was in, and again, I, going on a memory of juggling a lot of numbers, I, I believe it was June 1st, it might have been May 1st of 21, we'll clarify that.
According to the paperwork that I have from previous meetings, it was July 1st.
July 1st of 21.
July 1st, 2021, yes.
So, so if the project had been completed after that, up until today, it would be eligible to, to be reviewed for grant money?
Yeah, July 1st, 2021 through October 1st, 2022.
Yeah.
Uh, is the application window, or the, the, uh, the window for projects to be approved. is the application window or the, the, the window for projects to be approved.
And that, that was come on the October first date was on the timeline. That's a, a project that was already initiated by one of the business owners. So if a business owner also was looking at, hey, if I were to get X grant, I'll start that April, maybe because of the weather or whatever, it'd be, they, they would still be encouraged to submit that grant within this fiscal year if it could be started and completed by June thirtieth, so.
Jim, I, I applaud the efforts of the village to expand the facade grant program as, as you've described. I think it's, it's, you know, it's very progressive and it's great to see that we're working with the businesses. The one question I have for, for I guess the Planning Commission as well as the village, and that is, is there any thoughts or, or interest as we are incentivizing people to address their business needs that, that the customer can see? Whether it's the front door, whether it's the second floor, whatever it is? Is there any thoughts that we, we look at possibly the facade ordinance? My understanding is, is that it's, it's really kind of loose, it's not exceptionally detailed. I've, I've looked at some other communities and I've, and I've seen some that are very detailed. I don't know if we're at that point as a community that we need that, but I'm just curious. I wanted to throw it out there to see if there's any, if there's any thought or if I might be getting ahead of myself here a little bit.
I, I guess my question would be, what are you considering the facade ordinance? We don't have anything regulating building appearances downtown.
Yep, well, it'd be exactly that, Chris. It would be the, it'd be putting together, giving, and I say this because of one, a recent business opened up and the comment that was made to me was simply there, there wasn't a whole lot there, there wasn't a lot of direction as far as what my, my signage should look like or the, or, you know, what I can or can't do. And obviously I directed her to the, to the village. But again, it's, I, I'm just thinking that if we're, if we're providing these funds for folks to improve their businesses, is there a desire, as are in some communities, to have some level of, of consistency to an extent? I'm not saying that it's a shoebox, it's a cookie cutter where everybody has the same frontage, but I mean, are we at that point, you know? Or again, is, I'm just throwing it out there just to see if there's any, what the thought is, is all.
And I know that a number of years ago, that process had been started under the, under a prior version of the DDA to where there were design guidelines that were beginning to be developed to be put forth. That, that's within the last ten years. That process was left on hold a number of years ago and has not been pursued or finalized. I don't even know if any of that framework is still out there, but there was a plan to have a design guideline to keep some sort of uniformity or at least cohesion in how downtown was developed and redeveloped moving forward. And I think that the village has really taken the lead on that with the streetscape development across town and really started to bring a unified look to the village downtown itself. And I think that, you know, that definitely I would be interested in, in seeing a, a set of guidelines developed for, you know, for facades. I mean, we, you know, we, we don't want, you know, I don't, I don't think we would want, you know, a, a, extreme postmodern building popped up, you know, right in the middle of what would be considered, you know, a Queen Anne or, you know, a traditional village style building. So yeah, I think we want to keep the, the flavor, if you would, of the village similar to what it is now. That, that's something that, you know, we will probably want to look at doing.
Chris, I still have what we were working on before.
I probably do somewhere as well. I just don't know where it is.
I know where it is. And I just saw it not too long ago. The other thing is, and when, to answer your question about signage, that was one of the things that we were working on, if I remember correctly. We were talking about the size of signs, that, do you remember that?
Well, the size of signs are dictated by the sign ordinance. I'd second, and I, I know it used to be section fifty in the code. I'm not sure what it is with the, you know, after the code had been redeveloped. Those guidelines are established across the village for the size of the sign and the location on the building, how much of the front of the building it can take up. Those, those guidelines are already established, you know, across the village. But it was more the, you know, the look, you know, if we were going to have overhanging signs, which we had allowed, decided to allow again, you know, as well as dealing with the awnings, which was all, you know, addressed when we redeveloped the sign ordinance, you know, to, to allow buildings to put awnings, you know, or owners to put awnings back up on their buildings, which for a long time was not allowed, so.
Mr. Mallory, are there any, just curious what your comments are? Again, I, I didn't, I didn't want to jump ahead of anything that you and staff may be doing, but it's...
No, I'm, I mean, it's, I think, a good conversation and, and we'd look for the leadership of the Planning Commission and council if, to undertake some of that research. I mean, we, there, we, we have certainly have, have availability to, to other communities and our enlisters to, to at least look at the, I don't know if this is the right vernacular, but the pros and cons or the pluses and minuses so people can evaluate it and determine moving forward and probably could put together. I think a good time, and you'll hear me quite often here in the next few months, is to make it a part of our master plan. And it's a great effort, we're completely redoing the master plan. What do our citizens and elected leadership and appointed leadership look at the village for at minimum the next five years? And it's really the foundation of the next ten years. And to, to develop that into the surveys and I'll make sure that McKenna at least looks at that as a survey instrument of a uniform type downtown look.
I, I'm not sure exactly where we're at with this and, but the thought that I have is simply that it appears there's some work that's already been done. If, if Mr. Newman or Ms. DeLong would, would have that information, would be able to share it, I think it'd be great. And then would like to suggest that the, that I, I'm, we have some, some individuals that are representatives of the DDA. Do we have a DDA subcommittee?
We do.
That maybe that's something that, that the subcommittee, and I'd be more than willing to participate, that we look at because I've, what I hear Mr. Mallory saying, and I, and I agree with it, and that is, the idea is, is that if we look at this from a, a kind of a, a master plan along lens and how this would fit into, you know, the next five, six, seven, eight years. I don't know if we need to make a motion or if we just simply say we'll share information and then we'll, we'll follow up with everybody afterwards. Mr. Newman, what are your, you, you know the procedural way of handling things. What are your thoughts right now?
I, I don't believe that a motion needs to be made. I think that the agreement that if, if Ms. DeLong or myself can not source the information that was generated previously, to bring that to the, the DDA subcommittee for them to, to look at and if they choose to disseminate to the rest of the, to the rest of the commission. And everybody can take a look and, and start offering suggestions as, as well. I think that, you know, like Mr. Mallory said, that this is a, it is a perfect time to really approach this because of the, the, the new update and reworking of the master plan. It, it's, it's prime time to really look at, at developing that, seeing if it is something that, you know, that is wanted or, or needed across the village.
Mr. Mallory, is, are there anything else to report to us?
No, that, that's it, sir.
Okay. I, I believe now it's member comments and let's start...
I, I will so we don't race because of other portions of government. I'd be remiss if I didn't. Couple of events are going on this week in the village of Vicksburg. We really tried to energize once downtown was complete to get people to come to downtown Vicksburg just out of simple curiosity. Tomorrow night, we'll have our second food truck rally downtown where Main Street will be closed off with, with some events down there. So we're inviting the, the entire public to come on down. And, and we encourage it through our chamber of conference for businesses to stay open later and people to get to experience some of the unique retail shops and, that we have as well as the social district. So that's tomorrow, Tuesday, August ninth. And then this Friday will be our second movie in the park night, which we are showing the featured film Shrek, which I secured a few hours ago after diligently searching, but we have it. And looking forward to that. We had about, right around eighty to ninety people enjoy that film a couple Fridays ago. So this will be the second one. And looking for this to become an annual summer type event that we're utilizing the resources of the parks. So I do apologize for that, Mr. Holmes, but I certainly want to put the plug in for those two, two events that were initiated. Mr. Lee's highly responsible for the downtown activities this year in the parks and rec. Chad Kissinger and Wendy Fields and that entire group has really done a lot of legwork for events for kids under the age of twelve, so, thank you.
Mr. Mallory, what time will the food truck rally start tomorrow?
Just came to me, five o'clock.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, will Shrek be shown on Betamax or on LaserDisc?
I am happy to report the request was to find a Blu-ray 4K with some other information. And, you know, my gap goes from twen, like yourself, Mr. Holmes, from twenty-two years old child to six-month-old grandchild. So my kid's movie searching abilities are improving, but I did find what was requested. It is a Blu-ray and in fact I bought the whole Shrek series, so.
Well, great, if there's no additional comments, now it's member comments. Mr. Wartella, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, just a, a short comment. This past Sunday, I met two couples from Lapeer who were visiting family in the area. And they were told about Vicksburg and they were told about the historic village. And they said they enjoyed the historic village, but the point of this, they said, what a wonderful town you have here. So kudos to the folks that maintain it and the guys and folks that run it. We, we're doing a good job.
Thank you, Ms. DeLong.
I just want you to know, I live, you know, two blocks from Oswalt Park. I have yet to go by there without somebody in there eating or working on laptop or even if it's eighty degrees, turning the fire on. And I, I'm just really excited that people are that into using it now.
Mr. DeBolt? The newest member, Mr. Bishop.
I'd like to, first of all, thank you guys for helping me secure position on this board. I'm excited to be a part of it, excited to do more within the community and see how we can all grow together as a village, as individuals and, in my case, as businesses. To follow up, our first comment, I will get better with names, I assure you. Recently had a wedding this weekend, so that obviously brings a lot of out of towners in. Very same sentiment, everybody is extremely happy, especially people that haven't been here in the last one to five to fifteen years. Everybody has comments about every, every aspect, from Oswalt Park to the new potted plants. Everybody loves those, sidewalks are great, the, the lights, every, everything. So that's good feedback to hear. And obviously you guys all had a big part to play in it, especially you, Mr. Mallory. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, appreciate the comments. Mr. Manchester? Mr. Newman?
Just briefly, I'd like to welcome Mr. Bishop to, to the Planning Commission. And I would also like to thank Mr. Mucha for his time served on here. It was greatly appreciated and wish him all the best in his next endeavor.
Just, I would like to echo Mr. Newman's comments about Mr. Mucha's participation. Also welcome Mr. Bishop. And the only thing that I want to know is when is Rise and Dine opening back up? Mr. DeBolt? No other comments, I guess we'll close out.
One thing, and Chairman Schenkel isn't here, but start to formulate, we'll be recommending at the next meeting that the positions are, are selected by your board to both chairman, vice chairman, and again, we had a, a DDA subcommittee and that was Mr. Long, Mr. DeBolt, Mr. Wartella and Mr. Cox. We're the four members in that to concentrate on downtown. But you can anticipate that being on the agenda of September, so we can get that in, in place, so.
For the record, it's probably the middle of September, just for the record on us.
I guess we'll have to wait then. All right, with that being said, the meeting is closed.